You already called Porter. All right. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm doing multiple tasks trying to get the agenda up on my computer. But, um, welcome everyone. And, um, we will do roll call. I will start by saying that Keith is coming, but he'll be about 10 to 15 minutes late. And do we know if Tony or...
I have not heard from Tony nor Jim.
Jim will be here.
Jim is going to be late. Jim is going to be late?
He will be arriving in athletic gear and he wants to apologize in advance for that.
Okay.
So, very good. Sorry. So, we all received a copy of the minutes. We had a meeting on August 1st. Are there any amendments or edits that need to be made to the minutes? If not, may I have a motion?
So.
In a second. Great. All those in favor? And any extensions? Rob and Wally? Thank you. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We have none.
Amazing. I will invite anyone who'd like to address the board to please step up, introduce yourself. Is there anyone tonight? Hearing that, we'll move right on to your board chair report. Um, I know that Reagan will be talking about more detail, but I just want to say, um, congratulations to a great start this school year. I was able to go to the management day, um, and listen to the introduction, at least, before the session started. I have spoken with several teachers and the feedback has been tremendous. So, congratulations to all those who took part in planning that day and making that happen. Um, I think it was a stellar start and certainly started the, the school year on the right note, so congratulations. And I'd also like to welcome Rob, who is, uh, back from Winterport. And we're happy to have you up, back at the table, Rob.
He's nice to have the summer on.
Especially, yeah, right after the budget season. I'm sure you enjoyed it.
Oh, absolutely.
And get ready for next year's budget season. So, with that, we'll go over to the floor now.
Under resignations to report this evening, Sarah Borajron, is that correct? Thank you. Sarah Borajron has moved on with her spouse relocation. She's been our nurse. I won't be meeting with the replacement in the next couple of days, so we have someone online to do that. Also under transfers, we have Andrea Patterson being transferred from second grade to kindergarten. Actually, where she started out, right, Mrs. Moore? Yep, she was in kindergarten with the grade two and actually back to kindergarten. If that makes sense to you. Okay, then we have nominations this evening. We have four of them, so if you look at your agenda notes, first at Weatherby School, grade five, Dorothy Dawson. You can see Dorothy has an extensive, uh, international and, uh, US affiliation with teaching responsibilities. Her salary for the collective bargaining contract is $48,015. My recommendation for your endorsement, grade five, Weatherby School, Dorothy Dawson. So, move.
Any discussion or questions? Dorothy, do you want to just share what you did today in class?
What I did today in class?
Yeah. My class is her class.
Today, I helped about 60 students get their username and password to use Scratch, which is a coding program published by MIT. We're getting working on this as part of our science curriculum, excuse me, for the first trimester in fifth grade. And then, um, that's my piece of it, but then, um, Mr. Diamond will go on to fourth grade and third grade with that program for the, that one of the year.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Sheriff Hox has been waiting for your arrival, Dorothy. He's asked, and I think the last two weeks. Okay, now we move to Hinden Academy, health teacher Gloria Duriden. You can see Gloria's been teaching, um, also next door in RSU 25, which is the Bucks Forty area and that area of, of study. Her salary for the collective bargaining contract, $44,003.46. My recommendation Gloria Duriden, health teacher here at Hinden Academy. So, move. Second.
Any questions? You can certainly share what you've done today.
Getting my feet under me. It's been an awesome move. Very excited, students have been wonderful. Learning a new computers system. We used to have been a campus learning power school. Just really excited. Uh, the kids have just been welcoming and, uh, we're gonna make it through our first semester. So, I'm excited. It's hot, working with Phil again. Learned a lot from him before and, um, and I'm sitting with a previous student of mine from middle school. So, it's, it's wonderful. You have a great community here and I'm just looking forward to being a part of them.
Great, thank you. Right, all those in favor? Fantastic, welcome.
I'd also like to express appreciation to Gloria's superintendent, Mr. Boothby, because in the, in the education field, when a teacher resigns in the month of August, a teacher contract can hold a teacher to 60 days. That can be extremely problematic. The superintendent Boothby found someone miraculously to replace Gloria, so the transition actually was very effortless, from our perspective anyway, uh, because technically she could report to us on November 1st or thereabouts. Starting the school year was a, was a significant asset for us. Also at Hinden Academy, we moved to English, social studies, Jacob Joy. Jacob taught next door in Glenburn last year, also had student teaching experience here at Hinden Academy. He'll be coming to us with a $33,001.50 collective bargaining contract salary. My recommendation for your endorsement is Jacob Joy, English, social studies here at Hinden Academy. So, move. Second.
Any questions? Jacob, do you have anything you would like to say? We're checking out, we're doing something different tonight.
I'm really excited and honored to be back at Hinden Academy after a student taught year. It was definitely, I've always said that, um, Hinden Academy was definitely the best part of my professional career so far, so it's good to be back. I'm hyped passionate both US history and in English, so, um, the fact I get to teach both. My master's degree is a focus in inclusion of students, so teaching RTI, response to intervention is also a huge passion of mine. I'm really excited to work with the kids I get to work with. I have some really cool equipment coming into my room for kids who are hard of hearing. So, I'm, I love having kids who are freshmen through senior, um, all ends of the spectrum and it's just, it's been one, it's been a wonderful first weekend, it's good to be back.
Thank you. All those in favor? Wonderful, welcome.
Newberry Smith Elementary School, grade two, is Madison Porter. You can see, again, she has experience, uh, close by. She also, student taught at the Newberry Smith Elementary School this past academic year. Her salary for the contract is $33,001.50. Asking for your endorsement, grade two teacher, Smith, Madison Porter. So, move. Second.
Any questions? Madison, is she here? Hi.
She is.
Would you like to share anything? What's your first couple of things?
Well, I haven't started yet.
Now, Ma- I'm, excuse me, Madison's, Madison's in that situation where she's not near relieved of her current teaching responsibility. Mrs. Moore has a long-term sub, so we're in the transition of that as we speak.
Great, so you'll start on, at Smith, when?
Soon.
I'm in conversation with her superintendent, so that'll be...
Fair enough.
We're negotiating.
Fair enough, well, welcome. I'm sure you'll have plenty of stories to share when you do land here, so all of those in favor? Great, welcome.
Okay, thank you. Okay, under the superintendent's report, reading essential behaviors and outcomes, proclamation this evening is Joe.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Joe. Next item, just to, uh, add to what Karen mentioned about the opening day and focusing on the environment, we started off with a nice breakfast on that morning. And keep in mind for people in our audience, we employ about 375 people, give or take one or two. So, that's, that's what you have for breakfast, 375 people. And then we had presentations, we had the state police and the club of school safety. And then we were, uh, given a nice idea by our new administrative team, why don't we do something differently this year? So, we had 22 concurrent sessions of 20 minutes apiece where the teacher could select from 10 to 10:20 to go to this theme, whether it was safety or search dogs, or the case may be. And then at 10:20, 10:20, 10:40, you went to another session, and 10:40 to 11:15, you went to the third session. So, after an hour and 15 minutes, you were exposed to, uh, marketing, uh, finances, yoga, search and seizure. Looking at our faculty back there, Joel and...
African Americans.
Heartbeat?
Was that, was that intentional or was that?
Jen, there you go.
There was also, there was an escape room, you know, for those that wanted to be able to wear play balls.
Painted sip?
There was a painted sip.
Water.
Water.
Water. Totally appropriate.
But I, I had the ed tech come through me after the search, the search dog went out. She went way out in the, in the, uh, price country, she had a reeds bro- the dog left here, wandered out, found it out there, brought it back. And then we had a barbecue for those same 375 people, and then around 12:30, people went to respective school activities and that. So, that was a very typical day for RSU 22, but the feedback we had is extremely positive. So, that's how we spent that first day.
And just to know, I was only there for breakfast, and so I can't speak for the barbecue, but I'm sure it was the same, but nutrition services, food was phenomenal.
Yes.
They did a great job.
I was cooking lunch, you may not want to talk about it.
I, I actually came back for the free lunch as well, I had to pay breakfast, and, and it was also very good.
There you go. You can tell us the truth after. So, now let's talk about student enrollment. I did distribute to, to you a form and gave you historical perspective, and just for the benefit of the audience, I voted 2010 to date. What it is, I looked at a couple of benchmarks. Five years ago, and as compared to five years ago, our student population has increased by 145 students. I mentioned this to the ed committee tonight, that's a 6.3% increase in student population. I was saying anecdotally that the vast majority of school districts are losing students. So, we're in a very unique situation whereby we're trying to make accommodations with our increased enrollment. If you're interested with people that have been on the board, every three to four years we do a, uh, update with planning decisions on our enrollment, and usually they're within two to three. To our advantage, and surprise this year, they were off by 64 students, which is pretty much, that's large for them, 64 to our advantage. Also, for the first time in my career here, the high school has now exceeded 800 students. We, we, I think we're about 801, 802, something of that nature. We have 37 tuition students coming to HA this year, which is pretty much in alignment, actually a couple, three more than what we budgeted, so if you're looking at it through the fiscal lens for a minute, that's good news for us. Uh, so, your population is about 2,450 children in our school district. We also discussed tonight, the ed committee, if you're interested, our pre-K program, they're all full. Mrs. Moore, right?
That's right.
Now, Mrs. Moore, we have full day at Newberg.
Correct.
Full day of your school.
Correct.
Two sessions.
Correct.
And two half-day sessions at McGraw.
Correct.
So, we have 81 public pre-K children, and Hinden Highlands has 10. So, we have 91 fourth graders waiting to go into our, our kindergarten classes next year. 91, that's very good. So, enrollment is very, uh, strong, it's very consistent, and I wish for Scott.
Just to have you touch on this, because it's been an issue that we run through things as we go along, the public pre-K.
Yes.
There was, two years ago, there was a lot of discussion about the funding of public pre-K and how that affects, maybe for new board members you might talk about.
And Don's gonna help me. So, the way it started off two or three years ago is we had a partnership with Panquas Cat and Waldo in RSU 22, so we had a trifecta. If you remember last year, at the waning moments, Panquas Cat pulled out, and Mrs. Moore and I then went out and raised 60,000, well, we're just short, about 55,000. And Waldo Cat stayed intact, and that's where we are now. So, Waldo Cat is a partner with us at the Smith Elementary School. We're running a, a sole entity, if you will, with Newberg and McGraw Elementary School, and funding the 60,000 is now in our budget to support that public pre-K. Because remember, we can claim 81 children on your ED 279, that's $7,200 a kid, so let's round to 7,000 times, that's more than half a million dollars you're getting on revenue. And we're working with the partnership, maybe you might want to explain that a little bit, uh, with the Hinden Highland preschool.
We can buy 10 slots this year from her, so, um, we do have to pay her a fee to go there, but also we have to fund it from the state, so, um, it's sort of a benefit for both of us. She gets the clientele and we get, we get some other returns.
That was part of what I wanted to get at, was there, there's a lot of talk about, um, the public pre-K being a completely RSU 22 funded endeavor, and that there was no state funding for it.
That's right, that's not true.
And which is, which is not true, and I wanted to make sure.
That's a good point. And of course, the, the years run by me after a while, but we've had the public pre-K now, Don, eight years.
We've had collaboration for a long time, yes.
So, this is something we start, actually, I'll be very transparent, we started this one to make money, if you can believe it. Now, I, I need to say to you today, the most important part about this is the academic and the educational component there. Money's important, but eight or nine or 10 years ago, you and I woke, woke up one day and said, wow, we have some money problems, we're losing kids at that time, how do we basically groom our own kids? And we went out and we, we met with the commissioner in that, in the garage room one night, and that's actually what then brought about the collaboration with Tammy Cantwell Highland Preschool, because some of the local people out there that are running pre-K programs, they thought that we were going to then overcome their program, and their program would have to dry up, if you will. I think the way we are now, the beneficiaries of this are our children. So, that's what the education, uh, platform looks like insofar as enrollment. We're in a good situation. We have some pockets here and there. Again, the ed committee discussed a little bit tonight, particularly with Reeds Brook, we have about 15 children this year, that I shared with the committee, next year, again, if the enrollment's stationary, we're going to lose 28 children. So, you have that ebb and flow, uh, every, every year, so to speak. Anyone have any questions or any other observations on the enrollment data, if you will?
Rick, I just got a quick question out. At what point, where are we at capacity at HA?
Eight, this school was built for 850. Now, let me take you up to the third floor. If you're up to the third floor, facing towards Hinden, wherever that, that, that west?
East.
East. If you're facing east, all that left wall has been built to blow out the cinder blocks to put in five or six classrooms, if I remember. I'm looking at Rob.
Mirror, mirror, the corner.
Yeah. So, the infrastructure is there, so with probably minimal expense, minimal, how do you define that, Heath? We'd be able to add five or six classrooms right there, but the school itself was built for 850.
Without that?
Without that, that's right. So, that's, when you build a new school back five, six years ago, you had to build a new school with the capacity to expand. So, have the infrastructure there and everything is there, if we found the need five years down the road, whether to expand to Hinden Academy? Yep. Good question. Anything else on enrollment? It's always something you follow, because remember, that's one of the indicators in school funding, enrollment and valuation. Okay, thank you. Teacher exit surveys, uh, I did put a copy in your packet this evening. Uh, these exit surveys this year, uh, based on your recommendation to me, were done by building principals. You can see the questions that were posed, and I've selected what I'd consider the, probably the top three responses. We had many responses, but I don't want to read it to you, we can certainly discuss any if you want, but just going down through with a quick, uh, quick perusal. The average number of years these people spent at district is eight. What attracted you to the district? You can see reputation, facility, and so on. What did you, why did you leave the district? Salary increase was, was certainly mentioned. Retirement, move closer to home for a new position. We lost a couple of teachers to administrative positions, for example. What support did you wish you had gotten that would have helped you graduate as a teacher, more professional development? Experienced mentor for no stipends? What support did you receive that helped you? Co-workers, principal by far was the number one. Vertical teams, what that basically means, and Don and Jen and Bill can help me here, but vertical teams means teachers meeting across grade level, across content, versus only fourth grade teachers or only ELA teachers, so it's a, it's a heterogeneous group, if you will. Mentor. What was the most satisfying about your job? Our kids, level of support, and the overall staff. What was your least support? This doesn't surprise me a bit. Testing, workload, salary. What should the district do differently to assist teachers? This is a common response. Reduce testing, more choice of PD, higher pay, less workload. Would you recommend teaching in this school district to a friend or acquaintance? 10 to 2, yes or no? Were there any policies or procedures? Many demands, spending out of the pocket, eye observation, eye observation is a teacher evaluation model known as a Marzana model. Was your teaching assignment fulfilling and rewarding? 10 to 2, yes or no? Were there good opportunities for professional development, personal development, not around special net, again, need more? That's not surprising, because we have a lot of new teachers. New teachers means zero to six years to me, so PD's a very important benchmark for them. Were the school and district working conditions? Pleasant, everyone responded, absolute yes. So, that gives you a little bit of feeling of those people that walked out our doors this spring, and, uh, moving on to other positions, whether it's something they desired or whether it's what I use spells of relocation becoming a little bit more prevalent today as well. Any comments on the teacher exit surveys, if you may?
Do you kind of do a, um, co- collect these over time to look if there are patterns there?
I do, yeah.
And then make regulations based on...
I'll be, I'll be giving you a follow-up a little bit later on, probably in the district status report, yes, I do. Glory, Glory and I sit down, we do all those responses. And the other thing I mentioned at the outset, I used to do these myself, but the board belt might be a little more appropriate, the building principal would do better. I think they're very appropriate. Any other questions or comments there?
Do you know off the top of your head, or am I able to ask, how many, um, under C, how many left because of salary increase? Compared to retired or...
Yes, I'm gonna tell you. I would say probably four or five, Amanda, left with salary increase. Four or five.
Do you know of those four to five, how many left for administrative positions versus teaching positions? Because I, I would assume any administrative position.
We only had, to my knowledge, we only had one teacher leave this district for an administrative position. Other than that, and I can be transparent, I mean, Bangor hired three of our teachers. Brewer hired one, and we lost one lady that went to Glenburn to be the new principal. So, there, that's, so four went to teaching and one went to administrative position.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah.
And two to North Carolina, please. Move far, far away.
Well, just, just as you saw in the, in the resignation of our nurse, her husband relocated, was, was that her? No, that was down south somewhere too, but, you know, there's a lot of relocation with people, employment, so on.
Well, I think that's an important thing to note. Someone actually at work asked me today, I heard a lot of teachers are leaving to bring on my end, and if that's true, then that's, we need to, you know, look at that, but we also need to make sure that that's true.
It is true, this, I get, I think the question becomes, what's the magnitude of that?
Right.
And I just responded, overall, you saw there were 12 responses to the survey. We actually had, I'm pretty sure we had 21 or 22 new teachers. So, my response to you is that four teachers left for salary out of 22 people. Then you had that teacher that left an administrative position. The other thing I comment on, and I won't go into negotiations conversation, but salary's one thing, yes, but also, we have a very, in my opinion, we have a very strong, um, compensatory package here with respect to professional development, of course reimbursement, health insurance, dental insurance, and so on, that many of the districts don't. Now, if it's pure salary, absolutely. So, if Rick lines is 58 years old, I'm gonna retire in three or four years, that's very attractive to me, because the way, the way the retirement system works here is they take the average of your highest three years. So, you want to make sure in the last three, four, five years that you're gonna ramp that salary up significantly, so that can be a draw. But I would be very comfortable saying, Amanda, that not a large number of teachers are leaving here because of salary. Not a large number.
I think it would be helpful to have those numbers handy when we get asked that question.
Yeah.
Well, just replay tonight's testimony from the caliber of the teachers that we've just brought on board, or the, the letter that was provided from a, an junior teacher who just came on board, big section about joining RSU 22. I think these folks clearly have the skill set, that they could have taken to drop elsewhere, but they didn't, so it's, money may be one of the factors, but it's not all of them, and certainly, uh, we're able to attract a high caliber of folks.
Well, I met with an ed tech that selected to come to our district to work. She was offered two other positions on the same day in two neighboring school districts that I won't name. I went over, and when we meet with two people, I go over their, their contract with them, the salary, the benefits, everything. This may kind of give you a little bit of further feedback. This woman put down the pen and she looked at me and says, I want to die here. And she said, look, look at the opportunity I'm giving here. I mean, the credit reimbursement, the health insurance, the dental insurance, and the reputation of the district, and the facility that she's in. She says, I want to die here. So, there, there's the other point, counterpoint, so, sorry. But that's maybe...
She retires.
After a long, after a long career. Not here.
Going too far on that, okay. Now, Lucas is, uh, going to have some foot surgery next week, so he's not with us tonight. And Mr. Tracy, you've selected your candidate for our junior that I'm gonna meet shortly, and her name is?
Sarah Gass.
Okay.
And she will be joining us in October. She was just notified last week, we did interviews the week before that.
Okay, so Sarah will be with us as our junior rep and repping, representing Hinden Academy in our October meeting. Okay, Reagan. Excuse me.
There are enough copies for the audience, if you'd like. So, this is our monthly warrant. Okay. So, um, this report is showing you our 2019 fiscal year that we've entered since July 1st, our present statuses. And as I spoke to you about in August, expenditure in August is pretty minimal, with the exception of a few categories. We have quite a few expenditures for instructional supplies going into the beginning of the school year. We also have expenditures in maintenance, because we're doing a lot of projects around the district during the summer. So, you'll see that in Article One, regular instruction, we've had some expenditure beyond other articles. Article Five is an area where we spend out money for assessment and supplies and things like guidance, so that's been down. And then we also have Article Nine, which is facilities management. Uh, our expenditures are on track. We do expect that, uh, as we move along, that we'll be able to report to you when we start to see that there are expenditures that are either going to be seasonal, like debt service, we pay those out in certain months of the year, so it goes in a big pot, and then others that will be more predictable along the way, because we spend a bit of the time. So, any question on a particular article or the way this report works? Okay. I'm going to roll into my superintendent report for you, and you do have that in your packet, or for those in the audience, I will project. So, um, for finance, I want you to be aware that, uh, we will be making the applications to the main bond bank. We've already, um, submitted our materials, they've verified the rest, um, and I have a bit of good news. The, uh, projected interest rate, it's not solid yet, because they haven't made the awards, is a bit less than it would have been end of the spring. So, that's nice to hear. The unfortunate part is, of course, as I've let you know, we did not receive the grant money for the TURF that we were hoping to, but I do appreciate the pursuit of it, and I certainly do thank all the folks who participated on the committee to help us get those applications done. So, I will be updating you in November, most likely, when we have the final interest rate report. Facilities, you've heard about our opening day and the popularity of the management day. I would like to take the opportunity to thank all the principals and Brittany Layman for getting together to get this idea off the ground to the degree it went. Layman for getting together to get this idea off the ground to the degree it went. It really was remarkable, and it was a great feeling around the district. And I have to say, I think it's led into a positive start around the district as well. So let's talk about our opening day with students. We had a day that was pretty smooth. I am going to talk about transportation, and I'll just jump to it now. We had anticipated quite a bus driver shortage, and I wanted to let you know that out of the gate. I will say Melanie at Sierra Bus is simply amazing. She has been working overtime to get drivers, not necessarily new to the bus driving community, because it takes 10 to 12 weeks to certify to be a bus driver, but recruiting from within and getting people back who may have thought about going to another town to drive, or that had issues that were preventing them from driving, and helping them to work through getting back with a certification. So we have started the year off with all runs being covered. We are two drivers short, and so Melanie herself is helping to drive. The two drivers short, one of those is a trip driver for after school, so she's trying to rotate the athletic and field trips as best she can. And then she's helping to cover herself for a main run. I will say that the timeliness of the runs, usually the first week of school, where they're quite late, making sure everyone's back in. I can report to you that we've had, first day was 4:30 every bus back home, 4:20 the next day, and we feel good about that. So kudos to Sierra Bus. They also have a number of people in training. We've been recruiting. You've certainly saw in Lake 22, we put an article in there. She's been trying to advertise. So we have three people in training right now to become bus drivers. And I encourage you, if you know people who might have an interest in it, have them call Melanie so that they can talk to actual drivers and get a gist of what the job entails. Any questions on transport or the opening? We are going to be conducting school building inspection walkthroughs. And last year, we did those in September. We are having a challenge getting the organization and the dates because we have Alan on our committee, and then we have Tony on the committee who has particular days. So we're going to be working with him and Alan to get that off the ground. If there are other folks who are interested in going with building committee, let me know that, because I'd like to get people on board who'd be interested, even if you're not typically on the committee. Athletic facilities, we have completed the turf and lighting project. That has all been signed off. We have made some modifications to the lining on the turf, and thank you, Jim, for those suggestions. Those have all been taken care of and are finished. We do have a field at Winterport that is used for soccer and field hockey that we're having to water, and we're watering it every day with a partnership from the Winterport Fire Department. So we are seeing that we are getting some greening down there, and I've walked it three times myself. We're feeling the different texture, so it is safe for the students to be on, and we're not going to mow it until next week. So if you go down to Wagner and you see it looks scraggly, it's for a reason. We want that to take, and the temperature's going to be cooling off here soon. We also have the Reeds Brook Snack Shack. We did have a bit of that, the door painted and the kickboard painted on the field. The Haggins are here, who are our summer painters. Thank you. It's great. But I want you to know that the Reeds Brook Snack Shack is scheduled to be demolished. And the Reeds Brook boosters are working through UTC to have another building built and put up on the site. So we've already got the application in for a building permit and are working with them. So we'll be telling you more about that in October and November once soccer is done. Professional development, I just wanted to let you know that I attended a new business manager training at the DOE in Augusta. Got a lot of really good inside information about the way schools should be looking at audits and making sure that you're really studying what your results are. So that is being taken under advisement by Trish and I. I also attended an OSHA record keeping seminar with Patty Houghton, our HR person and payroll benefits manager, and David Greener, so that we're monitoring our record keeping and reporting for workplace injury. And I will say to you that I think our systems are in place well here in RSC 22. Now to you. We have an effort that we make on our website where we have biographies for each board member. And last year, we had each board member requested to go to a school and have your school picture taken, so it could accompany your biography. So that season is here, and I'm going to hand out the school picture dates, so you can pick which one you like. And if you miss all of them, there's a retake day. That's up to you. If you are a veteran member and...
Will you use our own glamour shots? Is that what you're saying?
Whatever works.
Not that I'm complaining, but I did have my picture taken. It never got on. I'm okay with that.
Take two. The other thing is that I'll send out a short email to describe for new members what we would like to have included in your biography. We keep them concise, but people like to know a little bit about you, maybe why you wanted to be a board member, a fun fact that we wouldn't know, and maybe something about if you have kids in the school yourself and would like to report on that, or something special about where you live. So I'll send an email to you, and if you can get back to me on that, great, and we'll get your biography up. And then I just wanted to take a moment. At our management day, we did have recognition for employees that have been in our district for 20 and 25 years, but I want to note that David Greener has served RSC 22 for 50 years. And he continues to amaze me every day. He's been a wonderful mentor to me, and I know so many of us in the district. And his work is absolutely irreplaceable because his historical knowledge is beyond what anyone could imagine. So a tribute to David and what we did to give him a token, because what do you give someone who's been here for 50 years? We gave him a lifetime pass to attend all our RSC 22 events that charge, so that he can bring a friend or his wife.
He's going to be employed forever anyway.
I know.
Reagan, I just wanted to double check on the school photos. The Hampden website, Hampden Academy, has its date for the school photo is September 13.
13th is true. What does our paper say?
September 12.
Well, it's the 13th, isn't it? Yes. Yes, the 13th is correct. Thank you. At least you want to show up a day early.
If we show up and there's a question, we're looking at selfie booths, we're going to think this is a plan.
I was very distracted by that.
Thank you, Karen.
Yes, so we will move right into questions of board members. Do you have any questions this evening? Go ahead, Marion.
I have a few. Is this a, is this a good place to share concerns that we get from citizens too that would be necessarily addressed to our superintendent?
Um, Rick, how would you?
Yes, it is. My preference would be, my preference would be you email me or call me, and I can deal with it that way. If you feel the need to amplify here, that's fine. I'm not embarrassed by that. But in a perfect world...
No, no, no. This is not a question. It's just something they notice. They notice that the 15 mile per hour signs and lights on Main Street in Hampden come on on the wrong days.
Okay.
She knows for sure that they've been on on the Saturday and not on on Mondays, just a safety thing when they aren't on on the correct days. I don't know if the ones by 202 are correct or not.
That's a good, that's a good thing to know. I'll follow up on that. Matter of fact, Reagan and I are meeting tomorrow afternoon with the new Hampden Town Manager. I'll bring that up to her, because it was managed by the town. But yes, to answer your question, I certainly welcome here, but in the little perfect world I try to live in, an email or a phone call, and I can handle that.
We're going to allow him to prep so that when you do ask in the meeting, he's able to give a full answer with the information.
That's right. If it needs to have any research, obviously, knowing beforehand. Yeah. Thank you. Excuse me.
So how best do we respond to things like the requests from Amelia Donahay regarding the resolution on climate action?
Yep, typically, I will respond to that on behalf of the board. And then what we'll have to discuss is if we want to, that typically those are taken by a policy committee discussion. And now that Joe's the chair, he might wish, I haven't connected with Joe yet, but we might wish to put it on agenda for a policy committee meeting. But that's, I will respond to her, you know. Yeah.
And that kind of brought up another question for me, and it looks like we do, but do we have a plan for addressing our carbon footprint? When I pulled in, I pulled in and parked in a low emission vehicle space. I had to back out because I don't have a hybrid. So is there a strategy for, that the district has for assessing and reducing our carbon footprint?
No, no, we didn't.
Okay. But it looks like you're already doing things, though.
We may do, we may do things with isolation.
You do. The school as a lead school has demonstrated an advocacy for that.
With the LED lighting and the geothermal?
Maybe recycle. Go back and look at the parameters for the school, and you'll see the footprint is much lower than it appears.
Exactly.
Might be interesting at some point to have a presentation on the things that we do around that topic.
Well, that reminds me of the presentation the board had months ago, remember, on suspensions and detention, and we had our administrative school for that. That was a very valuable learning opportunity. Yes, we can do that. Rob brings, brings a great point. This is silver school, right? I mean, we have no fossil fuels. This school is all heated by geothermal and some of the lighting as well. But we can do, we can do an overview and a presentation.
Plus with our bees and our garden.
Right? That's right. Okay.
I have one last question, which is, again, pursuant to J I H R F, have you received and/or provided approval for requests for assistance from ICE or CBP agents since school started?
No, I have not.
And have you received any requests from ICE or CBP or a law enforcement agent acting on their behalf for information about or access to any of our students since school started?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from board members? Now, we'll go right into committee reports. We do have finance committee meeting minutes. Keith?
We met last week. We just, we reviewed our FYE 18 expense report. Those books are closing very soon, so that'll be wrapping up. We will have to move a little bit of money between articles like we do every year. But actually, where we right-sized that budget a year ago, it really came out. I was really happy the way that it came out. It came out pretty close in a lot of the warrants. So that, that'll be something that we'll be able to build on in future budgets. It'll be a lot easier to budget, and now that we've right-sized that first year a little bit, we made it through, and it came out really nice. So we discussed the transportation article. We were over about one bus. Part of that was because of the innovative school, the middle school vocational, isn't it? Is it a vocational?
It was.
Innovative school.
From middle school.
It's an innovative school. We hadn't budgeted for that. It was kind of a last minute thing, so there was a little bit more expense there. And then we had a bridge that was out for construction, and there was a few kids on that Herman side of the interstate, actually a few.
Yes.
So we had to make other arrangements to get those students all the way around. So there was an additional thing, I believe it was. We discussed the, some of the revenue goals, how we did, like I said, and we did, in my opinion, really well. Talked about the implementation of the electronic purchases, purchase orders. That has been fully implemented. Gone through the learning curve, and it's going fairly smoothly. Some of the, some of the goals that we had looked at, electronic leave, time cards, web-based options. We haven't really implemented that yet, but it's still on the horizon. We talked about online applications. Hasn't been implemented yet, but it's still in our, in our focus. Talk briefly about the 19 budget rollout, some of the things that we should look at, talking about as far as that goes. Basically timeline, talked about implementing it a little bit earlier. Something that we need to talk about with budget, so we'll, we'll be doing that. Just discuss some of our goals for 18 and 19. Investigate, investigating paperless options for accounting. It's, it's one of those things where we've got paper coming in, needs to be paper going out. I envision someday that that won't be the case, but I think we're a long ways from that. The, talked about roles of the finance committee and the roles of the budget committee, and we talked about getting into some of our policies and reviewing some of our policies. Finance committee is kind of in a different place than we were three or four years ago. When I first got on the board, the finance committee just signed warrants. That's all we did. Now we're meeting monthly, talking more about some of the articles and how we're expending that money. And we did talk, Mary was at the meeting, asked some great questions, and we talked in the meeting about the roles of the finance. And basically, the roles of the finance committee is to expend the money that's already been budgeted by the budget committee. And then the budget committee sets in in the spring to budget the money for the following year. Once that's approved, now the finance committee works with that money. We...
I guess that was about it. Keith, by many while you're thinking, that's a good report. I would amplify the change of the finance committee was a great strategy in redirection three or four years ago that had been really involved. I do want to follow up, and here's my opinion. On the right sizing, that was a very good process. I will tell you now, having managed budgets for almost 30 years, a lack of contingency is a very, very challenging part of managing a budget. As compared to past years, and I shared the example when I was also the superintendent of VIZI. VIZI had a contingency line in special education, if you will. Our budget doesn't have that, the word luxury comes to mind, but that's the wrong word, but it doesn't have that flexibility because the budget is so tight, so tight. So for example, to quantify that, when we, when I put the new, two new teaching positions in the budget, in the process of we're not budgeted, that's $120,000 approximately, $120,000 in the budget that I didn't have. So I'm just making the point that, in my opinion, having managed budgets, when you have that, that allocation that's not dedicated in expenditure, it gives you some comfort and that flexibility. When you don't have that, and this is maybe what I want you to hear, there may be some times in the next three or four months where I deny something that a person wants. The reason for that is I don't have that flexibility, or at least my judgment is, I don't have the flexibility that I once did. So I just want to make sure that people hear that.
I'd comment on the budget. I think the overtures of a contingency were well heard and well received in the demand and the end of the turf situation. I think, had it not been for the dramatic shift in local valuation and some of the other shifts on the local, we would have absolutely pursued pushing more of a contingency through with the budget, given all the other things that have changed. It was, it was too much to tackle in one year. And we're now seeing that and the impact of that.
And I don't want to bore you in that, but the other thing that you need to remember about contingency, that also has an interface with fund balance. So in other words, at the end of the year, if you have a contingency, you can capture that either in designated fund balance or the undesignated fund balance. If you don't have the contingency, then you need to worry about meeting the $440,000 designated fund balance we have in this year's budget. So there's an interplay in all those moving parts. That's my problem, not your problem. I'm just kind of putting on, how in the perfect world, sometimes it sounds good, but when you operate a budget day in and day out, and you have those moving parts, just as you asked tonight, and you made about educational technicians. I was informed yesterday, they have a child moving to the school district, that RA has a scripted IEP individual education plan with a one-to-one educational technician. We can't say none of that. That's a price tag to 30, 35 to $40,000 that I need to capture somewhere. And I kind of bored Reagan, probably agitated a little bit today, because I need to make sure she's aware of these things, where she and I, hopefully in cooperation with administrative team, need to make those decisions. But there are some times where those decisions have to be made at the superintendent level. And that's okay. I'm okay with that. I just want you to hear that from me as my sentiment. Marion?
Over the, over the last five years, just from your memory, how much has that decreased in the budget?
How much of what decreased?
The contingency.
It's gone. We have no contingency.
Right, but five years ago.
Oh.
How much?
You mean, I think she means fund balance. You mean fund balance?
No, this contingency added to the budget.
Well, I'm not sure I can answer. Let me put it this way, Marion, generic ways. We had a contingency belief five years ago, and we looked at that carefully with a sense of, of making sure it was manageable, if you will, or is appropriate. But then, when we had the conversation two years ago, to right-size the budget and basically eliminate contingency, in my opinion, that was a direction, that was the wrong direction to take. So we went from having the knowledge that we had a contingency, some people accuse me of a surplus or fluff money, whatever you want to call it, we don't have that any longer.
How much was that?
There wasn't a contingency line.
No, that's right. It was embedded throughout the budget.
Right. And then that led to issues with confusion about
Yes.
whether you were padding certain budget items, when in reality, it should have just been held out separately as a true contingency, so people understood what it was for
Right.
and what it meant. The problem is, it doesn't clearly follow with a warrant article or with an other.
Yeah. And the other thing, to make it very, very simple, my, my major responsibility is, by law, I cannot overexpend the budget.
Exactly.
If I overexpend the budget, I need to dust off my resume. It's no, it's no more complicated than that. It's no more complicated than that. My, our budget's thirty-one million nine hundred and seven thousand. I cannot allocate one warrant, a penny over that. That's illegal.
Question for Keith on his comments, the discussion of the quote percent school year remaining. I assume that's so that as we look at the budget remaining, we can look and see that, for instance, if today we have eighty-nine point four percent of budget remaining, that we might have eighty-nine point four percent of the school year remaining?
Well, we were talking, we talked about that. I remember Scott asked a question about that, quite in the meetings. Having it there, and we talked about that quite a bit in the meeting. And the problem is, so we would have to have backdated, if you notice, like this one was printed the fifth of September. So we would have had to backdate it to the very end of the month, August thirty-first. But the problem is, like the budget, I mean the budget, the finance committee wouldn't have had a chance to review that yet. So we would have been here, presenting to the full board, and the finance committee wouldn't have reviewed it and had a good understanding, if they had any questions, to hash it out in finance. So you see what I mean? No, you don't.
Not quite. Because this is a stop in a line in time. This is not today, correct? This is?
This is September fifth.
So it is today.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think you could have more expenses in the beginning.
Sure.
I think just most people lose track of where we are in the year. And it's really not to walk anything, just as a reference to say, okay, we're
Well, and I understand where you are, because by cutting it off August thirty-first, you could say, well, that, you could divide it by the number of months that we've had, and then you should be able to look over here.
You should divide it by the number of days.
Well, you could use days. Well, you can't necessarily, because there could have been a payment made yesterday that could be a quarterly payment.
And that happens on every capital. It's just anecdotally, just to know where, how many, you know, what percent of the year remains?
That was sort of the impetus for my question, was it would give me, because I kept asking each time, like, well, so how, where are we on this and why is this one bigger than that one? And it would give me a sense of where, like what would be reasonable? Because then that way you see, okay, you've got seventy-five percent of the year left. And if you are, you only have sixty-five percent of the budget left on that, that's a red flag for me to ask a question about it.
Sure.
And every time I've done it, Reagan has been able to say, well, that's because there was a recent payment made on this thing. And perfect, good. But I, as opposed to, you know, right now, I sort of look at the, at warrant number one. And I assume because that's salary, that that's going to be relatively constant, and I sort of use that as my barometer. But, yeah, some way to get a good sense of where ought it be?
It's actually fiscal year, not school year.
Right.
You don't budget month to month.
It has to be fiscal year, not school year, right?
I think people are just interested in a context, right?
Right, exactly.
And so Trish and I understand that. We do feel like giving the fresh reports that are up to the minute, whenever we come to a meeting, feels like it is the most accurate. We do not have a way to generate an instantaneous report that gives the time context on it. So I think that I could just come with that context and just tell you as we present the...
The date of the committee board, right? We're at fifty percent sure.
And we could just try that and see how it goes. And then if it's not working out, we'll find something more formal.
It's hard to look at anyways, in the even and regular structure, and so much happens this kind of year, and so much expenditures right now.
Well, many businesses and organizations actually look at last year's numbers and compare to last year's spending at this time, because that's really where you start to see trends. If we're a hundred thousand dollars over at the end of the year, well, it's two extra positions. That's more informative, particularly when we're, when it comes to budget season, it might help actually for people to see twelve times throughout the year, this is trending over from last year, so you know why. And it's not a surprise at budget season, it's just a known at that point, because we've done this. And then the advocacy is what's critical at budget season, because it's more just information.
We could do that now that we're in our second year of the right side.
That's true. We couldn't before that, because we're not apples and oranges.
Yeah.
Actually, that's a great idea.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. Budget committee has no update. Athletic committee did not meet tonight, so building committee hours?
Yep, we met on August tenth. At that time, we discussed turf lighting projects. Then we talked about propane tanks. So Reedsburg and Weatherby have completed. At the Wagner School, propane tanks were installed last year, but groundwater floated one of them under the ground, so they dug them all up, and they're installing on above ground. It's just less desirable, but that's what we're going to have with this situation. And also at the Smith School, we redid quite a bit of the drainage on the south side of the property, because the groundwater was running up on the joint property. So there's a new curbing and a new catch basin and a new piping to catch that water. And that was completed and I think it works well. And then we just discussed some construct, major capital, school construction ratings, future capital projects. Like Reagan mentioned, the building walk-throughs, we have to take care of that, hopefully this month or early next month. That's it.
I know a lot of parents notice the new curbing, because the parents who pick up their kids will park along both sides of the driveway going out, and now there's no parking on that side.
Well, always something.
Oh, yeah, it is always something. But it looks excellent. It's going to totally relieve that problem, which is great.
The only issue is they did put the catch basin in kind of its own little loop thing.
Yeah.
So maintenance will have to be very careful to keep that clean during the plowing season. Now go to the plow, but they're going to have to shovel that out.
You're down there with him. One less traffic parking problem at Smith School, but I've already heard about the curb.
Okay.
They were parking on the lawn, of course. Definitely it wasn't really a lost parking area, but I understand that there's a jam there.
Negotiations will be later today. Education committee?
Yep, we met right before. We had a rich meeting, much of which was updates that we've already touched upon. Just lost on the screen. But one of the things that we talked about is not only would we kick off to the first day of school for staff to promote wellness, they're going to continue activities throughout the year to continue to promote wellness for our staff, students, and community. And in November, Jess Luckase is a seventeen-year-old, very talented fiddle player from MBI, will be joining us in the district in the evening to do a concert of sorts for staff, students, and community members to enjoy. Do we have an exact date on that, Mary Ann?
November second.
November second.
And he's awesome, if you haven't heard him.
He was, he played at the Folk Festival, he's played in Carnegie Hall, and...
I think I saw him on the news. Was he on the news?
Very talented young man, so that's great. All, we talked about the Spanish teaching positions are all full, so now district-wide grades, three to, excuse me, three to twelve, we are offering Spanish to our students, which is fantastic. That was not a small feat to get those filled. We had a nice conversation about class sizes at Reedsburg in particular. Some of the class sizes are getting fairly high, as high as twenty-eight and twenty-nine in the classroom. Dawn Rue is working diligently to try and manage that as best as possible, meanwhile keeping the options open and for our students to participate and be admitted in courts. So that is a complicating factor. Anything you want to add to that, Dawn? Is that good?
Dawn's not here.
Okay. She's right there. I'm looking at them. And we ended with a discussion about proficiency-based education. If you recall, last meeting, we had just learned that the law requiring the proficiency-based diploma by the year 2021 had been essentially taken away at the state level. And so we needed as a district to come up with, to make a decision about what we're going to do. And we reminded everyone that as a district, we are very committed to proficiency-based education, which is, could be, but could not be the same as a proficiency-based diploma. And so our administrative team and Mary have been working very hard to kind of come up with what is the best solution for what our proficiency-based, the future of our proficiency-based education will look like in this district, and what does that mean for our diploma system, not to be confused with one another. We, can I share what Mary and Bill had gotten together and really very simplistically, they gave some nice recommendations. They agreed upon as far as what to do with the proficiency-based diploma. This is just some initial thoughts. The next step would be we need to bring these initial thoughts to a policy committee. But essentially, we would keep the standards, the proficiency-based standards as a basis for all of the courses, which we already do. We would report out on all course standards, as we already do at all levels. We would continue at the high school level to report, and middle school level, Mary?
Yes.
High school and middle school level to report out on traditional grading, which is the zero to one hundred scale, and on that one to four scale for standards. So it would be the dual grading, like middle school and high school is used to at this time. Those with a grade of seventy to a hundred would indicate that the student passed the course and earned the credit. We would eliminate the proficiency-based diploma requirements and timeline. So if you remember, because state law required us to essentially, by the year 2021, we had said in 2020, start issuing proficiency-based diplomas, which meant people, it was a kind of a step-up scale, but the students were going to have to show proficiency in eight course areas. So even if they did all the work and they did, they performed to the best of their ability, if they scored a two in proficiency, they wouldn't be able to graduate under that system. So this has been something that has not been taken lightly, and a lot of preparation has gone into it, and a lot of work has gone into these discussions. And up until last month, we still weren't exactly sure how we would ensure that students earn, every student who is deserving of a diploma would get one under that old system, the proficiency-based diploma system. So the recommendation at this time is to eliminate that portion, the fact that everyone would have to meet proficiency three or above in every, in all eight course, every content areas. Jump in if I'm butchering anything.
That's accurate, so far.
Okay.
Some still will.
Nice synopsis.
Some still will.
They won't have to. No, they need, they need to receive credit. So they need to get a passing grade, which is seventy to a hundred on the scale of one to one hundred.
It's meant, so it's meant for one.
That's the way, so, yes. That's the way it's been for a while, but now
The policy will change.
The policy, we would, will be bringing it to the policy committee and probably for every graduate.
Again.
We would, so we would be eliminating that need to achieve a standard of three in every course that you take.
To graduate.
To graduate. Or to pass the course, to get the course credit.
Are we still going to call it proficiency-based?
We still are, the students are still receiving proficiency-based education. We still embrace the idea and the philosophy as a district, this is our recommendation you made, to embrace proficiency-based education. So what that is saying is students are reading, we have clear goals that they're working towards, clear understanding of concepts that students are working for. And in addition, their performance also needs to show that they're grasping the concepts and doing the work.
So will our, all our students graduate with a number grade also? So if you're still high efficiency, high proficient, will you still have a ninety-five?
Yes. Which is what's happening now.
Right, right.
And I, and that was always, my understanding, that was always the plan. We were going to keep the number grades and report out on the proficiency base. The difference is, under the new, now old law, what was going to count about getting that diploma was your proficiency scores. And now what's going to count for is getting that diploma is your grade scores.
It was a, sorry to speak up, it was a very small percentage of students that when we looked at it, that maybe would have achieved a seventy or above, but maybe we're missing a piece of a standard. So that was something to really, that we had to track across four years for students in every course. So the ability to now say, it can be a mix of the ones, twos, threes, and fours, as long as they get that seventy and one hundred, now we're still being able to balance on that old system that we know very well, but still be able to report out on all those targets, which are, which are key towards everyone.
So you still can drill down to see what a student is doing in a particular course, but he or she may not have to achieve a certain level of proficiency, but you'll still know where strengths and weaknesses are for your own child.
So the next, do we have any questions for Mary on that side?
Good work. I think that it's a good balance of respecting the work that's been done through the years, but also respecting some of what you're hearing in the community as well.
So we'll see some policies coming in the near future.
We will actually have to set probably, the educational committee will either have to set a joint meeting with policy, or just plan on attending a policy meeting. So either one we could do.
So Bill and I already went through that whole policy and looked at what we were making for recommendations coming forth this evening to the education committee. And so we've already drafted some recommendations based on this, if it's acceptable.
I think, we've been talking about this since I've been on the board, since I've been on the education committee, which is five years now, and with an increasing level of panic, not knowing how we were going to make sure that our students graduated and we met this, the requirement of the proficiency-based diploma. And so since this news came out a month ago, you can certainly feel the relief that's happening, or that's the relief in the education committee room. I feel it in me.
I think we were far ahead of a lot of districts, too.
But we don't want to go backwards. So we've, the district has put a lot of work in moving towards this proficiency-based education, and we are very clear, and have been very clear, that this is the philosophy that the, that we would recommend the district continue to embrace.
It's like local, local school control, not media.
That's true.
Do its best for our district.
With appropriate funding.
Correct, that would be nice, too.
Policy committee, Joe, I want to congratulate you, our new chair.
Thank you.
And do you have any updates other than what's on the poll for policy consideration?
Well, basically, nothing too much to add. John could not jump out of the chair seat quick enough. And it kind of roped me in. The, you know, what we're obviously going to be looking at are the second reading for the evaluation of the superintendent guidelines, nothing major changed there. Finally, going to be presenting the gifts, receipt language, we've worked on that quite a bit. And we just discussed quite a bit, basically trying to align the policy and the regulation regarding suspension of students and searches and questioning. And we'll be talking more about that at our next meeting to get the language, the saying between the regulation and the policy.
Thanks, Joe. UTC, Alan?
No, the first meeting's next, it's the thirteenth.
Behavioral review?
No meeting.
Education Foundation, I don't believe we have any takers yet. So this is a standing item on our agenda, the Education Foundation is a close partner to the board, they meet monthly, and we're looking for a board representative to participate on that. So please let Rick or I know if you're interested, Mary Ann.
I just have a question about that, since it, when was the last time there was a board member serving on that committee?
Well over a year, I believe. It's been an ongoing challenge to get a board member on that.
Does it make any sense at all to have a rotation through the foundation?
I've been trying to research the last couple of months, what the status of that group is, to tell you the truth. And I was on their website day before yesterday, and there's no current action or recent action on there. I need to find a couple of people so I can find out what they've been doing, Mary Ann, over the last few months, and maybe I can report back to the October board meeting.
I think that they switched from their external website to using their Facebook page more.
Okay.
One of the last meetings that I attended, they talked about the cost for the website to keep it up and running. They tried to explore ways to do that cheaper, so they weren't spending so much money just on the website. I think there were some talks about getting them on the RSC twenty-two's website at some point.
They also have had the opportunity, in every publication, the link twenty-two, they have the last page. Peter Witt has always been the person, I can't get ahold of Peter, so I'll try to find out from various people exactly what's going on.
Do you have the new email address? It's like rsc22foundation@gmail.com.
Yes, yes. I have that. So I'll try to find out.
Back to just the thought of rotating through. In other words, you don't have a member that's willing to commit to that for a long, a long period of time, say the school year or whatever. But does it make any sense to have us volunteer to go to say, have a calendar, which we would agree to attend, each one of us, so that we understood what it was about? I was really impressed with what you said, Rick, about some of the other educational foundations that exist in the state and how they're building dorms for
Oh, yes.
International students. So, I mean, there is potential there.
There is. To add to that, again, I To add to that, again, expressing my opinion, those, the one I know a lot, a fair amount is Dover Fox crop, SAD sixty-eight. Their key there is, like anything else in life, to have an executive director. Ours is purely voluntary. These are people trying to do work, their day job and also volunteer over here. If we'd had an executive director five or six years ago, we'd probably have a different conversation this evening. So I'll try to find some information about the Ed Foundation bringing back next month.
Yeah, and then move from there. It's not, it's a decent idea, Mary Ann, and something we may want to consider, you know, putting out a call for who wants to go in November, type of thing.
Might be the only way. You just point us to go.
Oh. Yeah, all right. Bruce, we have not met. Wellness Committee, Wally?
I have not met.
Imagine, and Community Relations, Scott?
We haven't met, we have, we have to establish our next meeting.
Great, thank you. Move into policy considerations, Joe, you have some policies to introduce tonight.
That's the first one.
Start with CBI dash R.
Which one are we on?
CBI dash R. That's the Evaluation Superintendent Guidelines, which actually Wally's been pretty much taking the lead on that. But I think that it had been sent back down for just some minor tweaks the last time we looked at it. And, you know, and that, those minor tweaks were made. We really looked at this quite a bit, so I would move that we adopt CBI dash R.
Any questions? Jane?
I was on the committee that worked on the new evaluation guidelines. And I also went to the Policy Committee the last time when we made the tweaks. And so when Gloria sent the things out, I read through it again, and something just didn't click right with me. So today, I really went through a fine tooth comb. And the dates don't match up on it. At the beginning, it talks about prior to like number four. Prior to the special meeting in June, the Ad Hoc Committee and Superintendent Schools will meet to construct a comprehensive compensation package to be recommended to the Board of the Directors. When you go down to the timelines at the bottom, that takes place in July. So there are, there are several ones that are like that, that it talks about something in June. The timeline at the bottom has it structured for July. The wording of it is very cumbersome. And I think what happened, Wally, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we went through the old one and then just tried to fix it using the new schedule that we kind of wanted to have, and it doesn't really jive. So I would be, I mean, I guess I would just as soon have other people's thoughts on, we can pass this and go back and fix it. Or we can, so one of the things, it talks about the goals. The superintendent's goals, has to have some goals prior to our looking at this evaluation. But it, it says in December. Well, are those goals going to be for the rest of the year? I think we knew there was going to be a gap in it as far as the goals go, because of this is going to be a December to start to look at it and then February and then not till July. So the goals for the year, I, a lot of things just aren't clear.
It could almost be cleaned up into a timeline task.
It absolutely shouldn't, because the actual timeline at the very bottom, I think is what we were aiming for. But it just didn't fit into the other pieces.
One of my thoughts, knowing that you have some concerns you're going to bring tonight, I think ideally when we did this, we talked about having our superintendent develop goals beginning of the school year. And then rolling out the mid-year evaluation December and then the final evaluation at the end of the school year, and then discussing contract extension and salary, June-July timeframe. On one, on one side, I wonder if we pass this for second reading so we can start the process, have Rick develop goals, have two solid years where we can practice and use this new tool with Rick before we have a new superintendent. And then maybe know that we'll take this policy back and see if we can shorten it up and trim it up and make it a lot more succinct.
The wording needs to be cleaned up, because it's, it's very confusing in the wording.
So I personally don't feel comfortable passing a policy if we're going to make modifications to it that are that drastic. But I would say that we need people to participate in the Policy Committee meetings that have to provide this feedback, Jane, you know, coming to a board meeting when we're about to do a second adoption.
Billy Pachal, Jane's been coming to the meetings.
And that, and that is what I said, when I called John, I forgot, Joe, that you had taken over the reign of that and called John this afternoon and said, I think, can we just take this off, off the agenda? Because this is not right. And then he called me back and said, you talked with Wally and they thought they should make it go forward. I'm not comfortable with going forward with something that is as confusing as this is. And the timeline just doesn't match up with the wording in the middle of it. And I don't think that that would, that would prohibit Rick from making goals.
I think that's one of the things that we need to look at, because if we scrap this and start back over, then if we look at October, we have a discussion. November, we bring it for first reading, December, we bring it for second reading, so then we're not actually.
Well, I think you could bring it back for a second reading.
I think you could. Just a quick question.
Wow, yeah.
And I apologize if I missed and great work by the Policy Committee again. This is, sometimes things are not aware until people look at it at a third time. It indicates that the evaluation commences, it says during December and May it would commence. Does it commence occur in one instance?
We have a midterm, mid-year evaluation.
Mid-year evaluation.
Just to have the board see where, the discussions that the Ad Hoc Committee had were to have like a mid-year evaluation, see how the superintendent's doing, and then an end-of-school year.
Did it mention orientation for the board in December, then again in May? And to me, if there's an orientation once, May is more of a follow-up unless there's new board members. I didn't know why it was written that, I mean, usually commences once, it's not twice.
I think the orientation.
Is there a difference in December and May? And if so, maybe we just break it up and say in December we do this and then in May it's that. It looks like they're the same.
That's what I mean, the wordiness of it is, is quite complicated. And they, and they don't, the times don't match up.
So maybe my suggestion, Joe, if you or a couple of committee members on your committee and I met, we can go over it and hammer it out for the next policy committee, present that hopefully in final draft to the Policy Committee, rather than doing it at the subcommittee level. I'd be more than willing to do that with a couple of people when they meet. We could, we could do that timeline so it makes sense and bring that all together. The other, and you bring up a good point, because the other thing you can change here is we're going to the midterm evaluation. We've never done that before, so that's a change for us. It won't be me, but it'd be, it'd be me at the end. I mean, I think Wally used a guinea pig's term, the need.
And I think we were looking at it also as, as a new superintendent, to kind of give a lot, a little bit more guidance going through the two, and the ones that we looked at, most had a mid-year.
So if two or three people sat down for like for an hour and a half, whatever, we can get this thing streamlined and do what I think we're all thinking right now. I was just thinking that was a suggestion.
So Joe, I'm going to toss this back to you, you made the motion. You're also the chair of the Policy Committee. Do, would you like to withdraw your motion or would you like to?
No, I think we should go forward with a vote and then depending on the vote, we can decide where to go.
So we have a motion on the floor. We'll vote on that. So is there any other discussion?
Clarification, I think, on mine, can we, we, we can, oh, do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, okay, very good. Can there be a first reading, we talked about first reading and second readings, usually with these policies, you can have that and you can make changes accordingly, if I'm not mistaken. That I want to be clear about before we vote on this. Can we vote to, if we did vote to approve, we can't approve, we're going to have a first reading and a second reading anyway.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the second reading and adopt the policy.
Okay, so this is the second reading?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if we vote it down, does it go back?
If we vote it down, I'll ask for a motion to have it redirected to the policy. And then it'll come back as a second reading.
Yes.
As a second.
So, yeah.
Procedural question. If, if the vote fails and we don't approve the second reading, does that mean the policy fails? Or could there be an amendment to the motion recommending that it be remanded back to the Policy Committee and then brought back for?
That's not a true amendment.
Second reading, that's not a true amendment?
Amendment has to be associated.
The chair has directed the policy and made it take action.
Yeah. So with that, I'm going to move forward with the vote then, okay? All those in favor of the motion for second reading and adoption of this policy as written, please raise your hand if you're in favor. Three people. And Wally. All of those not in favor. Are there any abstentions? We'll ask for a motion that this get, this policy, this regulation is redirected to the Policy Committee for modification to come back to the board for another second reading.
So move.
Second. And again, second of that. Any discussion about that?
Just for my education, so for right now, what is in place is the existing policy.
That's right.
The regulation.
In terms of the evaluation of the superintendent.
That's exactly right.
And also, just to clarify as well, is this going back to policy or, Ricky was saying, getting a few?
Well, I, I suggest, I mean, leave that to Joe, I suggest if it's directed to go back to the Policy Committee, maybe an interim step, if we have two or three people work on it, then present it to the Policy Committee and hopefully it'd be hopefully done.
And that's a decision, Joe and Rick, and that's outside of our group. Any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, thanks, Policy Committee, you're doing a tremendous job on this one.
Well, it's mostly Wally, I think.
Yes, Wally, he did a great job.
The second one, I think this is a first reading.
It is, the next three are.
Is regarding the changes that we made for public gifts and donations to the schools. We wanted to raise the amount that superintendent would be able to admit without the school board's permission. But he always has to, of course, inform the school board. And we went around on different areas, you know, eventually came down on five thousand, but it was a good amount. You might remember there was that, what was it? It was the sports clock or.
It was the, the, down to Wyman School, it was the, Patty, Wyman School, eighteen hundred dollars.
Right, that, that was something that we had to deal with as a board.
Exactly.
So that's where this kind of came from. So I would move the first reading for KCD.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Comment on, I think we're involved with the credibilities with nonprofits. This one, two, three, fourth, I guess paragraph down, this last sentence, the superintendent will notify and write in prospective letters if their gift cannot be accepted. And that's really dealing with a gift that may actually have an excess burden of cost or relation to other things. Would it be possible to investigate language that rather than, or include in that rather than acceptance or modification of the gift to address any noted concerns about that? Because I think that the worst thing we could do is, is notify someone that can't accept the gift. And I know there's going to be background conversation before it gets there, but without a policy to back it up, someone could say, you know, I can't believe you turned down my gift. So I think there should be some direction that folks who may not be aware that their gift may cost the school money, that they may want to amend it so that it's partial gift, partial endowment, or something to that effect. And maybe it will increase the gift amount. So you never know until you guide them, but not accepting is usually considered offensive to the donor unless they understand why we're coming from there.
Good point.
Thanks, Ron. Any other comments for the Policy Committee?
And again, just for clarification back on Jim's question, this is first reading. You approved the first reading, it comes back to a second reading, incorporating any changes, yeah?
Right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the first reading of policy KCD for the kids' donations to the schools. All those in favor? You then, but thank you. The floor continues to be yours, Joe.
Now, the, this, one regarding referral and pre-referral. The reason why this was adopted, discussed at the committee, I should say, is basically the language that's being added is required by state law. And we just added some clarification to make sure that it was, you know, parents and or guardians that are going to be, that can make referrals and that sort of thing. But that's the reason why that that's just looked at. So I would move the first reading of IHBAA.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Thank you.
And related to that is, did we make changes to IHBAC on?
Will you?
Yeah.
Yes. Basically along the same lines, related to the pre-referral is the, the language regarding child fund when there's investigation regarding students that may need special services. And again, you know, semantic language added regarding guardians. And it references the one that we just approved for first reading. It's all related. So I would move to approve IHBAC for first reading.
Second.
Mary, a second of that. Any questions?
Just an observation noting that twenty is technically an adult. After the age of eighteen, is there any language that needs to be amended into that to reflect that the child may be self-representative when they're in fact an adult? I know we've had that in other policies and then created a special group of parameters. Or is it, I thought it was just be seventeen actually, I mean, this is twenty, so I was.
Let me check with Lynn.
First reading.
Yeah.
And this is first reading, so. Maybe it's.
Looking at that too, if there's any guidance related to that, because it may obviously.
Any other questions or thoughts? The motion to approve first reading of policy IHBAC child fund, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe. We'll move right into old business to discuss policy BAA, which is Evaluation of School Board, Board Self-Evaluation and Company Regulation that you all received in your packet. This was actually added to the agenda per Mary Ann's request, but what it did do, Mary Ann, before I open the floor to you, I did want to kind of give a little bit of additional guidance. It caused Rick and I to look at the policy and realize that we are behind schedule when it comes to our self-evaluation. And I don't know, Mary Ann, if that's why you had us put it on the agenda anyway, if that is the reason, thank you. But it also led to a good, healthy discussion between Rick and I as well, because the policy is worth review, I think. And so we have some thoughts we wanted to share with the board and then open it up for discussion as well. And Rick, certainly chime in if you.
I think just to add to that, if you remember, the board the last four, five months had a lot of turnover vacancies. And I think, not that we, we certainly did miss it, but I think again, maybe some rationale as to or least justification why we didn't, but we, we had some great inconsistency, that inconsistency at that point in time versus most years you do this, you've had a board for good eleven months and you give me a lot of true nice reflection.
Yeah.
But now we come back to the point is, what, how do we now want to react to it given the regulation? Regulation, not the policy.
Right, so the policy actually doesn't necessarily outline a timeline for when we have to do our self-evaluation.
Right.
The regulation, however, does say that we will do it in August. It also states that we will do it after our summer retreat.
Right.
And so, given the challenges we've been experiencing over the last couple of years in terms of timeline and what makes sense for us in terms of our board operation, Rick and I do feel it is definitely worth a discussion at the policy level to kind of figure out where does this truly line up with our current operations as a board? Does it make sense to do this in August? Or do we want to align it with a different planning of the board, whether it be our strategic planning or for our superintendent evaluation? I don't know the answer to that, but I do know an August self-evaluation after a retreat might not be an ideal time. We don't have a summer retreat anymore. And we also tend not to meet very often, if at all, in July, depending on what's going on with the budget. And so it might be worth a policy discussion, so.
Karen, excuse me, to add to that, remember, up until five or six months ago, the board used to meet twice a month. And then we moved to monthly meetings. There's another part of the equation that's changed a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. And to be honest with you, I joined the board in November, I don't know, four. And to be honest with you, I joined the board in November, I don't know, four, four years ago, and a month after I joined the board, I did this self-evaluation. So I think it's not new that the board has missed the deadline. We actually never really even had easy access to regulations until just very recently. So I don't know if I've ever seen the regulations before Mary Ann pointed it out, Rob.
Observation and question. Observation, in other groups we've done self-evaluations and it really aligns the strokes with their acumen's or interests to be on, whether it's their committees or, you know, we talked about the foundation, if you're someone who's advocate for development, financial development or finances, you might be more likely to go, or if your interest is in education or other matters, it may not be a good fit. I would also ask, or at least it's my understanding, that a regulation is something that the administration creates after board creates policy. It's for the administration to enforce policy for staff and for school, but I'm not sure the regulation actually applies to the board. I think the board would be better served if we collapsed our regulation into the policy, because that's what we're driven by, regulations. And that way it'd just be more of a guidance that we need to catch up to when appropriate, because with offsets of election cycles, June, special meetings, August, November, when is the perfect time to maybe sort of take that asset of what are the board's strengths and weaknesses and where do folks go? That's typically what other groups do, and maybe we've lost our ability to align that with fewer meetings and with some of these offsets.
Right. Absolutely. So I'd like to propose that, and then at the same time, we do have a policy and we should try to adhere to it. And the policy does state that we'll have an ad hoc committee formed, usually led by Vice Chair.
Always.
That will help compile our self-evaluation, we can then report that out to the board. This tool that we use is here. It is in your packet, and I do think that it's a worthwhile exercise that we attempt to do this month. And so while, we'd like to do these in parallel fields, but that's Rick and I's suggestion, and I'm opening it up for discussion and questions and to hear your thoughts or recommendations. Mary Ann?
First of all, I just want to acknowledge the breadth and depth of what each one of you has to know in order to function as a board member. It's just stunning to me. And going, and for me, the learning process has been going through the policies. And I've been looking at best practices of school boards, just generally at that, and certainly self-evaluation is right up front there. And one of the things that, question that came up for me, okay, the last one was done in 2016, so it wasn't done in 17 and it wasn't done in 18, in the way in which you aligned it in your regulation. When I looked at the 2016, it was impressive and all kinds of positive things came out of it, including the Community Relations Committee. But I don't know, I asked Gloria, and she wasn't able to get back to me on whether there was actually an action plan that came out of that, or was it folded into the strategic plan? So more than just a self-evaluation, I'd like us to think about what we're going to do with those results. The important thing for me, and I imagine it's going to be important for everyone who's sitting here, is that we model the behaviors we expect of others, so that we are paying attention to our own board governance policies, so that we are actually doing what we say we're going to do. We take compliance very seriously here in the district, so much so that continuous disregard for board policy and regulation may be interpreted as willful neglect of duty. That's CH. So, and I think the process of evaluation is incredibly important for each of us as individuals, but also for the board as a whole. And I would also like to propose, as we think more about this, number one, that before we actually fill this out, whatever committee is formed, actually looks at the form and see if it's still what we want to use. And if we do want to use it, that we also ask our administrative team to evaluate the board on these standards or whatever, so...
I appreciate that, Mary Ann, and I certainly agree with you, and so I appreciate hearing that. When we, and Wally really took the lead with Jane and, sorry, I think I may have...
John.
John, sorry, John, to review and revamp the superintendent evaluation tool. It was a very intense and long process, it took a lot of thought and research into that. So I appreciate that, that we, your suggestion that we review this and look at our process, and I don't disagree with you, but I think to do that in conjunction with actually administering it is going to be impossible if we want to actually do a self-evaluation this year. So maybe we, maybe we do a self-evaluation and then talk about feedback and about our own experience and see if we do need then have an ad hoc looking at this tool to revamp it for next year, but I don't think it can be done in conjunction with...
I think that's what we did with the superintendent evaluation, is we completed it and then immediately jumped off on looking at the evaluation tool and then looking at the policy, the regulation. So that might make sense for this, as we complete it, and then maybe when the board needs to discuss it, have a discussion about it, does the ad hoc committee need to... The other thing Karen, to interject in that equation, is the retreat, the last time we had a retreat was January 2017. So you had the retreat, you had the board self-evaluation, you had the superintendent evaluation, where's the intersection among those moving parts? Because as I was listening to you, Mary Ann, in my opinion, sometimes the things that come out of the board self-evaluation, they could be defined in the superintendent's goal, or they could be embedded in the, to the strategic plan as well. So I think you have those three things that somehow we have to have a coordinated effort to get them in perfect synergy to something.
Any other thoughts or...
I like the reference to the Community Relations Committee, I don't think there was one particular item that led to our realizing that we needed that. I think it was a culmination of many things that happened over that period of time, from negotiations to budget to superintendent to just interaction with public at meetings and how to manage all that process. And then some of the messaging or the counter-messaging that was out there was not met with the board's own messaging, and it led to us really making sure that as one board, we spoke with one board, not as multiple separate subgroups, and it was a way to make sure that we're all really on the same page when it came to those conversations, for all those reasons. I don't remember it happening for once, so I think the process of evaluating that was good.
I also want to congratulate the board, there's a point, there's a really significant point I want to make, and that is that we have tremendous assets. What we're trying to figure out is how we coordinate it. I wish Martha Harris were here, because how many times have you heard Martha Harris rant and rave because A, many school boards don't formally evaluate their superintendent, and B, they don't have a clue about board self-evaluation? So in other words, what I'm saying is, we have all the parts operational, we just need to have the moving parts better coordinated, and I think we have a tremendous asset we're trying to just synchronize.
And to make sure that we actually put those moving parts into motion.
Absolutely.
That's my...
Absolutely.
Take away from just...
I'll take responsibility for missing this last year as well. Any other thoughts around this?
I would just like some other input from people about the idea of having the administrative team also evaluate the board on the, using the same tool.
I think it's a great idea for the revised version. I think to implement that, this year with this tool isn't really what it was intended or directed to do, but I do think that that's important feedback, and I'd love to hear from the administrative. So as we come back and talk about our self-evaluation, I think, did we do that publicly or in executive session, I don't remember?
We do what?
When we talk about the results for ourselves, it's in executive session, I think.
Yes, it is.
That will sure be part of that discussion.
I think the biggest benefit of this is just the exercise itself. I mean, just the exercise of evaluating yourself, reading through this, are we doing this?
That's exactly...
I mean, I think the biggest benefit is there. Once it's done, it's done. Obviously, if we're not reading some of those, we need to work on it.
Sure.
The benefit is just the act of it itself.
How about Rob's just... Scott?
It occurred to me, you know, we just had the discussion about the timeline, was it the breaks there? There are things that exist in policy that we are supposed to be doing at this point, at this point, at this point. It'd be really good to have that laid out in a calendar so that we know that at this meeting we should be doing this, and at this meeting we should be doing that, and this should be something that all board members have so that we know, because, I mean frankly, we've got...
There's a lot to track.
We've got a lot of policies.
Plus you...
And trying to go through and just know it is, you can't. I mean, unless, unless all you're doing is just knowing the policy. I happen to have other things to do too.
That's a great idea.
Well, I think that might help see like how many, how many specific things do you have at any given time, and then could we adjust policies or regulations to spread it out around them? For example, if you did superintendent evaluation and board evaluation at the same exact time, that may be a lot for the Vice Chair.
And then not to complicate this, you have a board self-evaluation, you have two different times the board members are elected. You have the people coming in Newburg and Winterport in June, and you have the people coming in Hampden, and then you have some complexities with that as well. I mean, as Karen said, she came, her first meeting is the board self-evaluation. Okay, was that appropriate?
It was, and I remember going, I don't know why. Probably like, Mary Ann will go like, she does. Okay.
Where are we leaving this?
So I would like to, I would like to implement this tool this time, so we all can review it, get a feel for it, and see where we want to go from this year moving forward. So I would like to ask for a few, two to three volunteers to join Amanda in an ad hoc committee, which usually tends to want to do that. Mary Ann? Jessica? And, any other volunteers?
Right here.
Jim? Look at that. No. So, can we shoot for getting these? When do you want them by?
Is it unfair to say two weeks from now?
No. We, these are due two weeks from today, and can we have Gloria send the electronic version? And if such a preference?
Good.
So results can be sent directly to Amanda?
By the 19th of September? I'm letting out the last name.
Oh, when?
The 19th of September. And then based on ad hoc, your availability, you know, when you feel you might be ready to present to the board, it will be an executive session.
And then our ad hoc will have a goal of meeting that call every week?
And to specify, Gloria sends those out, if you could ask her to send them in a Word doc. I remember the first one we got, these came on pages, and I, I don't do Apple, probably.
I'll do my best.
And I, this is a question for the board, do we want to wait until after we have an executive session before we move this to Policy Committee for discussion, just in case there's some things that come out of that that might influence policy felt?
I think that makes sense, and I think that policy's going to have a lot on its plate in the next meeting, where we're going to be talking about provision for education and superintendent.
Is it fair to ask that, after you do the self-evaluation, if you have any additional comments about the evaluation tool and/or process itself? If you could include that?
Good. Thank you very much, and thanks, Mary Ann, for adding that to the agenda. We'll go right into new business for the Maine School Management Association Fall Conference.
This one's easy. If you are interested, put in your calendar, October 25 and 26, the meeting in October, I'll have you in the first draft agenda, but basically look at this session where there are numerous opportunities running concurrently, where you have the opportunity to choose between probably 15 and 20 sessions each hour and a half. They're very valuable, every board member will come to those, have great tapeaways. August 25, 26 is a Pacific Senate, about eight in the morning to about six at night on Thursday, eight in the morning to about one o'clock on Friday. So when, if you're interested, send me an email, we'll register you. And again, I'm not sure that I'll bring you the first draft agenda as to what the sessions are. Matter of fact, we're looking to present, not that you have to go to that one, but we're looking to present it.
What are you looking to present?
Actually, what we're talking about tonight, board, student relations.
I, one last year was fantastic, I'm not able to go this year, and we will need one voting member, so...
Yes.
Keep that in mind.
So we'll bring that back in our October meeting for follow-up.
Discuss an act on the unpaid leave request?
Yes, we have Representative Hagan in the audience, so you have received his request. I'll have David make any comments. Mr. Hagan?
All right, well, two years ago, this august body of glorious people approved for me to have a long-term sub, to be able to go ahead and serve in the House of Representatives if I defeat my opponent. I really enjoyed it, it's a lot of fun. I've never read so much in my life, college is nothing. You guys know all about it. I'd like to go do it again. The first term, last time around, I asked for 50 days, I wasn't really sure what it would be, and then I asked for 30, 45, 40 or 45 in the second. I've realized the legislature, in the legislature, you only go Tuesdays and Thursdays for 80% of it. So, and a lot of the voting actually happens between around two in the afternoon to two in the morning. So I was able to come to school and then go to Augusta and do my thing. Or if, in January, February, and March, the speaker, all she does is, there were over 2,400 bills, so what she'd do is run through the sentiment calendar and then, you know, say nice things about people and this and that, and then just refer bills to committee for two or three hours, and then say, okay, that's enough, see you Thursday. So I actually missed way less than 50 days, and I missed way less than 35 or whatever it was. Mrs. Nichols, when you guys approved a long-term sub, Mrs. Nichols was able to procure a wonderful lady, Mrs. McConnell, Ms. McConnell, and I was able to, because of the time, Ms. McConnell was willing to sit with me for about two hours a day the day before, so we would sit and plan and scheme, and her 40-year vet thing really worked well. So I was able to pull it off in a great way. I didn't miss anything, our Veterans Appreciation Event, which will be November 9 this year, if you come to Rees-Brook, you'll love it, our ice fishing, our main day, our apple unit, my coaching, the Veteran Interview Program at Kohl's Express, Kohl's, whatever it is, never missed a thing. So I'm here to request approval again for the long-term sub. I make, I lose $350 a day every day that I go down. There is a salary that offsets the money that I, that I lose, so that has a lot to do with the number of days. Fuzzy head has figured out enough so they don't take a beating. I think a long-term sub is $120 a day. You could correct me if I'm wrong, is she...
150 long-term.
150. So you guys even make 100 bucks a day for the school district every time I'm out. So I would love to be able to do it and hope that you would approve, Linda.
Just to kind of act, if you introduce us, based on our conversation, if you would.
Yeah, so two years ago, we did vote on this, and in, part of, whenever you go over a document like the policies, you learn a lot about them, and when you go over the contract, you learn a lot about the contract as well. And Article 12A, sorry, Article 12B5 references exactly what Representative Hagan is asking for, and it's very clear that it says that the board shall grant, so long as he makes his request at the appropriate time, which he has, the board shall grant the unpaid leave. So although we did grant it last time and we did the right thing, contractually, he's already met the burden, so...
So Scott taught me something tonight, that's a great catch. The board shall acknowledge positively Representative Hagan's request, it's not discretionary, shall. There's no contract enforcement now, though, correct?
Sure is.
The contract expires, doesn't it? Well, it expires, but we operate under the last contract until a successor contract is approved. So in other words, all the language in the contract exists until somebody succeeds it, including salary ladder.
So what was the impact or feedback from students and their parents over the last two years?
Very positive. Ms. McConnell was able to continue, and she's as good as it gets. I didn't miss consecutive days until the very end in the first term. This year, the very end was April break, so I never missed consecutive days. So there was, the continuity was great, it was refreshing for the kids to come in, to see her, she hasn't, you know, she's not me, so the content is really interesting. So I think it worked out really well. And my relationship with the... it worked out really well, and my relationship with the kids is very, very strong.
Joe?
I, my daughter was in Mr. Hagan's class, uh, two years ago, when it was the long-term year, it's, you know, you have a long session, you have a short session, we're going to go into a long session next year. I disagree, I think that it had a major impact on the kids, I don't think it worked out well, I think the kids really lost out in not having a consistent teacher, and, uh, you know, and I actually, I had to list my complaints to management, uh, you know, afterwards, not, not during, uh, so I, I don't think it was a good idea. Certainly, under state law, he's entitled to take a year, um, leave, uh, I haven't, I don't know about with the contract, but in terms of just how it worked, I don't think it worked out well. I think that the kids really suffered, having, uh, you know, Mr. Hagan in and out, in and out, and it certainly felt like it was consecutive, um, you know, because my kid was always telling me, he was out, he was.
He told you Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
What time would we be doing it?
The afternoon or evening?
Well, wait a minute, on Wednesday's possible up until five for me, if we can make it earlier than five, then.
Anyone for the morning? Early morning?
I can do morning on any day that night.
Oh, early morning?
I just can't do after hours.
Late morning, but. Um, I'll send out an email, we'll figure it out, we'll do it.
Okay.
Do it.
I'll just leave that.
Who have thoughts for people? Do we have any other community meetings we need to set?
Community relations? We were going to do ours on the fourth, but we didn't have. Community relations, who's on it now? Commander, me, okay, Jim, okay. So, uh, for me, next week, Wednesday or Friday?
Next, uh, next Wednesday's the twelfth, right?
Yep.
It's going to be in, it's going to be in Orno by five, so probably, that's probably not going to work unless you want to do it in late morning. Thursday, well?
No, Thursday's out.
Thursday's out, but you say Fri- Friday?
Friday.
Yeah, Friday I got a game.
Soccer's over?
Yeah, soccer season, baby. Mondays, uh, you said it's only Wednesday and Friday this week, Scott?
Uh, only Wednesday and Friday this week.
For, for that week, that's, yeah, both of us, I'm already scheduled. Following week. Hang on. Following week, uh, that's just been scheduled for me as of yet, so.
Commander, what do you, Wednesday or Friday? On the nineteen, no, nineteen to twenty-first?
Oh, nineteen to twenty-first. Yep, either one.
Yeah, uh, like a four-thirty start, I gotta get a kid in the dance class, and then I can drop him off and do the meeting and go back.
You said today?
Four-thirty on the nineteen?
Yep.
All right. So that's our nineteen.
Can't change it. Now we go for, for some reason, anyway, um.
Jimmy, if it doesn't work, just email and we'll.
Yeah, I think I've blocked it because I thought we might have a, a meeting here that, that day, but that's not the case, so.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
So what time?
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty.
Nineteen to five-thirty. I'll send these out to you tomorrow.
Five-thirty?
Four-thirty to five-thirty.
Okay, yep.
One hour, one hour's locked.
Can I have somebody read the motion to do any second?
Before you. Can I make a quick request here?
Sure.
Before we go into executive session, I would like the, um, I'd like the board's blessing for me to escort the good people here, especially the good people of Handen here outside, so I can shamelessly hit them up for signature, so I can serve for another three years.
Well, that is not a board action, that you can do that when we, that's a personal choice? And, um, because it's not appropriate, really, to.
I know, but that's, I'm just asking.
We did a two-minute recess, we were going to meet, but he waited to gather for reasons.
Um, so could we, um, please have a motion to, um, go into an executive session for somebody?
I make that motion, but I don't have, I'm trying to pull it up and.
I move to go into executive discussion, discuss a personal matter according to one MRSA, section four oh five, six A. Period. And included in that executive session was the Mary GR, our Director of Curriculum.
Right.
That needs to be noted.
Second.
Great, thank you.